Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for January 30th, 2020. Police stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag. Altogether, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, through the republic in which it stands, one nation, individual liberty and justice. I want to welcome our new selectman. Congratulations on your win. Is Tom Clark here? Would you want to come up and swear him in, please?
Do you mark on this word that will faithfully be in the top to strike all the rules and the government of Massachusetts.
I'm going to have opening comments and vice chair goes first.
Well, it's nice to be here. And sitting on this side of the table rather than that, I had one, the voters come up to me yesterday and said, "I'm voting for you." And I said, "Why would you vote for me?" And he said, "Because we had to pay you for 17 years, now you're doing it for nothing." But I'm glad to be here. There are a few type things I wanted to address right up front. I know that there's been a big issue this last day or so up at Northeastern in terms of some of the work clearing that they've been doing. I've met with the town administrator of this and we're discussing a, you know, our response. We're waiting for legal counsel and such to weigh in on some things. But I asked Tony, I told him I was going to make two motions tonight. The first motion is to require that, well, the head of the town administrator send Northeastern a letter asking them to provide five days prior notice for any significant work event at Northeastern. The purpose of this is that we don't, we don't get blindsided. We know what's coming. The residents know what's coming. If there's an issue legally, we can address it before work begins. We're not issuing cease and desist and those types of things. And, you know, I think it'll be a smoother process. So that would be the first motion, to direct the town administrator to send Northeastern a letter requiring that they, through the town administrator, provide seven day prior notice for any work activity.
Hold on a minute. May the motion is motion second?
Seconded.
Motion second, discussion.
I just wanted to clarify, so seven days or five?
Five days.
Five working days? Five working days? Okay.
Great idea. Further discussion? All those in favor, single by saying aye.
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 Aye. The second motion is, I would like the town administrator to set up a meeting with KP Law so that we can meet in executive session to discuss potential litigation.
Great. I think and I suggest that we've got to, we're going to be going back to first and third selectmen's meeting. So we'll be meeting next Thursday night. And I'll ask Tony to set up an executive session after that meeting.
That's good.
Okay, we won't go back into session afterwards, okay? But Tony, would you set that up afterwards?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think we have to second that and vote, right? Is that a motion?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, I seconded it.
Discussion? All those in favor, single by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's it.
Okay. Josh?
Nothing.
Opening comments?
Nope.
On behalf of the board, I want to congratulate you. And very much appreciate you stepping up to the plate again, you know, and working for the town. And you're right, you only get a dollar, I think, versus, you know, but you're a welcome addition to the board, and I'm very, very proud that you stepped up. You're a fantastic town manager, and 17 years, you did a great job. Many years, but you're going to serve the town well, which you always do. There's a winter red and blue light graphics now on both the town and the police website homepages. The red light would mean winter parking ban is in effect. A blue light, snow emergency declared. So that will be set up on our webpage. By the time we finish, we'll probably have lights at the beginning of the town flashing down the road. The water bills have been mailed out on 1/24 and they're due on 2/24, February 24th. Excise bills are mailed out on January 28th and due February 27th. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's Executive Session on December 5th, 2019. Josh?
Seconded.
Motion's a seconded. Discussion?
Why don't you take them, I don't believe you've had an opportunity to fully read them yet, so why don't you take them and we'll put them on the agenda to vote next week, once you have a chance to review.
Okay, that's fine. The next thing on the agenda, we've got the Wright-Pierce presentation. We're going to put you guys up first, all right? Now, how long do you think it's going to take? Five, how much, 10 minutes?
Well, I've asked him to try to breeze through it. It's an important one.
No, it is, it is. Take your time, I'm only trying, but go ahead.
So I'll kind of open it up for him. As the town knows, our sewer infrastructure is at the top of our priority list. In 2017, the town experienced two breaks on the linway totaling about $1.6 million in repairs. At that time, we depleted our retained earnings about, to around $600,000, and we did an emergency borrowing of $1 million to get to pay for those repairs. Then in 2018, at annual town meeting, the town authorized, town meeting authorized the town to borrow $4 million to take the next step on tackling our sewer infrastructure needs and beginning an assessment of our sewer main. And then just last year, actually on our DPW superintendent's first day of work, we experienced another break on the linway to the tune of about $300,000. And just in August or September of last year, we had another break on Willow Road at the Wharf, right around the Wharf pump station there, another main break, about $100,000. So this issue is costing the town significant amount of money in recent years. And we hired, we did a public bid process and got a ton of good bids in from different engineering services, and Wright-Pierce was above them all, and we hired them to take a look at our force mains and take a look at a menu of different options to consider for either repairing the existing main or thinking about some alternative solutions. And what they're here tonight is to present those findings of the assessment. This is going to be a borrowing article at this year's town meeting. What you'll see from their presentation is that we have critical repairs along the linway that really we can't wait much longer to accomplish. And then secondly, repairs to our main pump station at Ward Road is probably our second most critical need. So they weren't hired to look at the pump station or the other pump stations around town or the internal system, but they're going to present on what they found with
My name's Tom Simberall, with Wright-Pierce, here with Andrew Smith.
Yeah, we get a microphone?
They give you a microphone. Yeah, we need. For the folks at home.
I could do it from up there if you'd like.
Oh, sure. Also, for folks at home, this presentation's going to be added to our website so people can download it off of Nahant.org and take a look at it after tonight.
Okay. So like Tony had said, we were hired last spring, right around spring, we started our work, and I think you're going to have to do it. Okay. So our scope of work was the Lowlands Pumping Station Force Main. It's a critical asset. It may be one of the most critical assets for the town. All sewerage from the, all wastewater from the town, little Nahant, comes to this pumping station at the end of the dead end on Ward. It's the Lowland Pumping Station, so all wastewater in the town goes to this location. There's pumps in here, and from this station, they pump through an 18-inch pipe all the way to the Lynn Wastewater Treatment Plant where it gets treated. So this presentation, I'm just going to, we're going to do a little bit of background so everybody gets up to speed as to where everything is. I'll go over what condition assessments we did of the pipeline and then what the alternatives were and how it was prioritized. So I think what we're going to do here is we're going to try to work some magic. We never have technical difficulties. Here we go. So if you can just pause it right here for a second. So just to, I think everybody's familiar with what Nahant looks like. You can see the entire peninsula, Little Nahant, from the bottom of the screen north up to the Rotary and then Bering left toward, down the linway to the treatment plant. So what we had done here was we created, it was a 3D model to help us with the evaluations of the pipeline. This is a little animation, it's only like two minutes long, but if you want to stop right there, Andrew, right, right at the bottom of the screen, right there, thank you. That's the, this is Ward Street, that's the pumping station, that's Lowlands Pumping Station, all the wastewater comes to that one location. Our job was, and what Tony mentioned, was the failures of the pipeline that go from this pumping station to Lynn. So if you look at this, you can see, there's my little dot, there it is. See the screen line right there? That's the 18-inch force main. And if you want to just hold it right there. So the 18-inch force main is pretty much right in the middle of the road at this time, over by the Dunkin' Donuts and the Tides. Maybe you can point to it, Andrew, the Tides. Yep, right there, exactly. From there, actually, the force main kind of takes a right east and it goes along the parking lot and the beach area, so you can just keep going there. This is, the pipeline's made out of ductile iron. It was built in 1983, and this is a 35-year-old force main. For ductile iron, that's a fairly long time. If you want to just hold it right over here too, yep. So it goes up past the MDC Swimming Building. It goes across the street there at the MDC, goes over to the park, there it is, right there, the park on this side, and then goes down to the linway. So this is where the, this is where the condition of the pipe really gets seriously impaired, so if you want to keep going now. So what we did here is we changed the color of the force main from green to this purple magenta. So you can see it over by the tennis courts, it comes around, and now the pipeline goes right down the middle of the road, down where the island, through the median, just to the harbor side. And you can see market and Broad coming in over there. Right over here, maybe a little bit more, yeah. It does a little jogging to get out of the way of other utilities, and then it continues down to Gas Wharf Road. And from there, right over in here, it takes a left and goes into the treatment plant over there. That whole area, the magenta area, is the most critical portion. That's where the condition is the worst. As part of our scope of work, we also evaluated the Willow Road pump force main. There's a, there's a small pumping station down at the end of Wharf. Let's see. Right down over here. And for those residents who live around that area, last August, September, there was a break right at the pumping station, right over here. This one, there's really not a lot of plans for this pipeline. This is small, 10-inch. It goes all along the road and it goes across the harbor area to the ocean view, down by where the golf course, it meets with the golf course, as you can see. So another long force main, old force main. This one's had a series of breaks as well. And once it ends, the force main ends right here, it goes to a gravity sewer that goes through the golf course and goes all the way to the Lowlands Pumping Station. So that's the animation. That's just as a little background of what we're talking about. So we'll go back to the presentation. So again, just as background, 18-inch diameter, length is three miles long, age is 35 years old, ductile iron cement lined and batuminous coated, just traditional for that type, but what we, the problem area is right up there on the linway from what we discovered, so. Here's, here's a profile, I know it might be a little bit tough to see, but here's a profile of it. This would be the Lowlands Pumping Station over here, and on the right, that would be where the Lynn Wastewater Treatment Plant is. Although it is relatively flat, the pipeline's relatively flat, this is the pipeline here, and up there is the grade of the road. There are a series of, at high points, air release manholes, and at the low points, cleanup manholes, there's about six each. And when the pipeline goes through those manholes, you can actually physically see the pipe and you can do a condition assessment on the pipe. So what was experiencing and the causes for all those breaks, there's two major causes. One of them is a hydrogen sulfide corrosion. That's a corrosion that occurs inside the pipe. You're picturing this long force main that's three miles long, that has a lot of bacteria. It takes a long time to get from one point all the way to the treatment plant, and while it's in there, a lot of biological activity happens. The further you, the closer you get to the treatment plant, the more you see. That biologic activity creates hydrogen sulfide gas, which then converts to sulfuric acid. And this was a pipeline in another not-so-lucky Massachusetts community. This ductile iron pipe was only 15 years old, and the corrosion was so bad, it literally ate away at the top of the pipe. You haven't experienced that yet. It's not nearly to this, but you are getting close to a very, very thin wall on the pipe. Now this one over here, this is electrolysis corrosion. You can see these holes right in here, and this is the pipeline. This is Zach's first day on the job. And the cause of this is ductile iron being a metal, if there's stray currents in the ground from grounding grids or from major duck banks, underground duck banks, the duck banks put a charge into the ground and the pipeline acts as a wire. What ends up happening is the gasket, when you put two of the pipes together, the gasket acts as a barrier, so it wants, the current jumps around it and it causes flaking and pitting, and that's what causes that type of corrosion. So along the linway, there's multiple duck banks, large duck banks, and it's also at the tail end of the force main. So this one, the linway is experiencing both of these types of corrosion. So what we did was all the manholes, both clean, the cleanouts and the air release, we used these ultrasonic thickness testers. You put them on the pipe and they're extremely accurate. This is a picture of us going at one of the manholes. And why don't we put up, this is the, really a kind of a critical slide, this next one. Just a second. Okay, we'll start at the bottom. Yep. So pipe wall thickness. So a piece of ductile iron pipe, if it was brand new, back in 1983, the wall thickness would be about a half, half an inch. So you can see down by, this is, where are we here? So you can see down by, this is, where are we here? I don't know, maybe you can point to it. Oh, there it is. My thing's dying, I think. Okay, right here, there's Little Nahant. Here's the pumping station. There's an air release and a cleanup manhole. So you can see what we, the thickness we recorded, the, the actual thickness was pretty good. It's almost like a hundred percent of like new pipe. But now as we keep going north along the beach, this is where the rotary is. This is where it starts to get bad. And you can see how it's being reduced to the point over here where there's only really twenty-five percent left of the pipe. So it's supposed to be a half an inch. It's only point one inches, just as it gets closer to the treatment plant. So it's not surprising. It, for the age of the pipe, it just means that this is a very susceptible pipe right there, so.
Are those measurements taken specifically at those manhole access points?
Yep. We entered the manholes. We de-watered them. We went down and we used that exact same probe right there. And fortunately, there, there was enough manholes that we were able to, you know, get a really good profile of what was happening to the wall thickness, Josh. So that was the condition assessment. After that, we took the next step and said, okay, we've got a pipeline that's certainly reaching the end of its service life. What, what are the different options to do either a repair or a relining? So we looked at different options. We've got typical dig and replace, traditional, using a structural cured and place liner, slip lining, pipe bursting, micro tunneling and a cross harbor directional drill. That was an option that was presented just prior to us and was at, we were asked to do a further evaluation of that. So this, this boat right here, I know Josh, you were there that morning. I'm not a geologist. I'm an engineer, but this boat has all geologic information, instruments on it, very expensive. We worked out on the harbor for two days. We wanted to see what the feasibility of use, of doing the cross harbor approach would be. So if you move to the next one, it comes up with this very detailed plan. Like I said, I'm not a hydrogeologist, but what this is telling you right down, and this is a profile that would go from the rotary all the way to the treatment plant, right across the harbor. And the instrumentation picks up what the, what the top surface is below the water and the red line is where the ledge is. So to do a directional drill, you would need to know that information. And unfortunately, it wasn't, the, the length of pipe that we need to do, which would be over like three, almost four thousand feet there, we would need to be at such a depth that really made this option kind of fall, fall to the wayside. We were looking at like forty million dollars just to do a cross bay. And the reason is, is you can do a directional drill like a hundred feet and all you need to be is like five feet deep. Maybe a thousand feet to two thou, to a thousand feet, you'd need to be ten, ten feet deep, fifteen. But to do one this deep, you really need to really go down to at least forty feet. We had a bunch of major drilling contractors say that they need to, to be at a certain depth. And the reason is, the directional drilling, it's a drill plus it's pressure drilling fluid. And when you get to a distance of four thousand feet, the pressure is, really becomes high. And if you don't have enough soil or rock above you, it'll frack out and then it'll be in the harbor, so. So we eliminated this, this option. It just was, just too, too costly. Go to the next one. This one was another one that we thought might be a creative solution if we did a little micro tunneling under all the utilities in the, in the Linway. But again, the price really, once we started putting the, putting the numbers together, we're like above thirty, thirty million. So we eliminated this one. The good news is that we did find, come up with three good alternatives. Really good. One of them, you know, the dig and replace method, that's traditional. That's feasible. Another one is a cured and place liner where we, where we line the existing pipe. And then the other one is a slip lining approach, similar to the cured and place liner, only it's a pipe within a pipe, similar to this picture here where you pull another pipe through the old pipe, just using the existing pipe as a host. And that's a structural liner. All of these options would be using PVC or HDPE pipe, which has no, which is in, in, and has no, hydrogen sulfide corrosion has no effect on it. And also it, electrolysis stray currents have no effect on it. So really, the life of the pipe would be at a minimum fifty years, whether we do dig and replace or the liner or the slip lining, we would use either those two materials. So there's some prices up there. And we've got the Linway first. You know, we're, we're going through the recommendations now, but it looks like the most cost-effective is the slip lining approach. To do that whole thousand feet, it's about six million with, with engineering and construction. The Causeway piece, which is longer but a lot easier to do, it's not, it doesn't have to fight the forty thousand, forty thousand cars a day. That one, what we have there, six point eight. And then Willow Road, which is a much smaller pipe, we would do that as a traditional dig and replace. That, that was the most cost-effective and that would be about a little over two million. So the priority, I think it's wise to obviously do the Linway first. And after that, Willow and then finally the Causeway. And these are the lengths and the, and the costs. And I know Tony, you had some other thoughts on that.
Yeah, so as I mentioned before, our biggest, our most costly repairs are when the force main goes down. Because we have to pump our wastewater with trucks from the island to Lynn Water Sewer and it's extremely costly. So we want to identify or try to attack those problems first. So our pump station at Ward Road has a number of critical repairs that are needed. So what I, how I would prioritize this is one, the Linway, from the rotary to Lynn Water Sewer. And two, the, the most critical repairs at the pump station on Ward Road. Then I would go to Willow Road, which, the convenient part about Willow Road is we wouldn't have to set up a temporary bypass. We could just dig, put in a new pipe and then switch over to it. So it's, it's much easier that way. And then lastly, the Causeway. You had mentioned that the Causeway is, you know, it's got a pretty good thickness on it. It's probably about ten years, eight, ten years down the road where we really need to start approaching that problem. And then trickled in probably after attacking the Linway and the pumps, and the main pump station at Ward Road would be the critical repairs at our other pump stations around town and our internal network. So Dan Coughlin has done a, an assessment of our, you know, our four inch, six inch and eight inch laterals and has put together a, an assessment of where the most critical needs are, are in that as well. But, you know, those are, those are important, especially for our II issues, but it's just, it's not, you know, you're not talking about hundred thousand dollar breaks when those repairs are needed. So we will be putting, we will have an article, a borrowing article at the, at the town meeting this, this May to authorize the town to borrow the remaining amount of funds needed for the Linway and the critical repairs at the pump, at the pump station. So we're also looking at sewer rate relief fund, which is a good low-interest loan program. We, as I mentioned before, in twenty eighteen, the town borrowed four million dollars. We have about three point seven million dollars left of that four million that we borrowed. The three hundred thousand of it has been spent on some of the repairs that we've had to do in the past year or so and the assessment that we just did. So with the Linway being around six point two million and around two million dollars potentially for repairs at the, at the pump station, you're at around eight, eight point two. Minus three point seven million that we already have, we're looking at an authorization of around four and a half million dollars. Now that, for this year, would just be the authorization. We wouldn't have to borrow that in fiscal year twenty. But to get the authorization on the board, authorize and then for us to go after SRF funding so that we can at least get started, we can use the three point seven million to get started on the design and permitting of the Linway job and start taking, start approaching the, the critical needs of the Ward Road pump station.
A couple of questions. For the Willow Road stretch, did you get wall thickness assessments there?
You know, that pipeline, I didn't mention it, but that's AC pipe, asbestos cement transite pipe. There's no manholes on the, on the, along the way. There's actually, really, I don't even think there's any good set of plans for that. So that's why we were saying, okay, we kind, we know where it is on the street. With exactly what Tony said, let's not set up a bypass, leave that pipe there, let's put a brand new one in, PVC, HDPE, build it, test it, put it online and then decommission the old one. AC pipe, you know, that, that pipeline's even older. That's probably somewhere between nineteen forty-five and nineteen seventy for that one. I know the pumping station itself was constructed before nineteen sixty-two. So, because we have some plans from the sixties of the upgrade to it. So I think that pipeline, you probably got all your money's worth out of that one as well.
I didn't hear what the critical repairs to the pumping station are. Description of that?
You guys, so we have, we have a capital plan and a, and a report that was done by Coughlin in twenty sixteen or seventeen. But we also have Weston and Sampson putting together an updated capital plan for us this week. We had them out there. But we have some underground storage tanks there of oil. We have a generator that needs repairs. The pumps themselves and, and different sorts of critical needs of the building. It's just the building. Obviously, that area is susceptible to flooding. So it needs, it needs a good amount of work.
Yeah, I think, I think the good news is that the building structure is in good shape. It was built well. What's happening is, is all the mechanical equipment that was put in back in nineteen eighty-three is thirty-five years old. The switchgear, the electrical, the lights, they've all pretty much, they're at the end of their useful life, so.
The trouble, the, not to add more bad news to the situation, but the troubling piece too is that Lynn Water Sewer, they're also going through a number of capital repairs and a new operating and maintenance contract. So we're, you know, when, with Gorillak Farms coming offline, we already saw an increase in our, in our sewer rates and we're expecting to see increase in sewer rates because of the repairs that are required at the treatment plant that gets spread out amongst the four communities, us, Saugus, Swanska and Lynn. So it's, 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 there's a lot of, there's a lot of needs and a lot of costs coming down the line. And the other part about Willow Road I wanted to mention was, we know the National Grid has some gas line repairs to be doing along Willow Road, along Tudor Beach. And we even have some water main work that we'd like to be doing down there too. So there'll be some coordination on that when we get to that point.
Those pipes down the Willow Road are not very deep. And the eighteen wheelers that are going down there are very heavy. I'm not sure we should look at restricting the weight and truck size for Willow Road. That's the one.
Question I have is the cost for going across, you know, you take the pipe down the Causeway and then come across by the Public Works Building, you know, the state Public Works.
Yes, yes.
And go across the ocean, you know, the harbor there.
Oh, the harbor crossing alternative. Over forty million.
Forty million.
Yeah, yep. One of the things about it is, you know, that profile that you saw there, yeah, if you go back. No, no, the, the bathymetric work on the, yeah, right there. Tony, just your seat, just one, real quick. Seat.
This is the light, right on that ledge. And this is, this is the C four. This gray line, this, these two marks here are actually the two channels.
Right.
And this is, this is where the ledge is. We're getting a little interference over here. But, but here's the thing about it, if you notice, these are all like ten feet. And so over here, you know, you've got probably twenty feet of overburden. Over here, you've got some more. You know, we, we were a little bit optimistic because we were like, Tish, we got another job. We were there, we're like, if you use twenty feet, you might be able to pull this off. But the drilling contractors, we were like, there's no way. It's, it's just, it'll frack out. So from there, there was, all the drilling contractors were saying, let's get into the rock. If we get into the rock, we, we're driving this thing down forty, fifty feet. And then we need a spot, a whole spot and a structure where we can drain that. So if you talk about caisson, it's just.
I have a couple of questions, if you would. Couple of things. On the Linway, I know that Swanska's force main runs parallel to Nahant. I'm not quite sure exactly where it is. But the slip lining will require some bypass, I would imagine.
Yes.
And how, how, how long would those sections be? How, how long can you slip line? Like ten, twenty feet at a time?
Oh, the slip lining option is generally about a thousand feet. So what we were thinking, what our plan was, if you want to pull up that.
I've done a lot of my past work, I've worked for general contractors. So what we're thinking of is the force main crosses here to do a tap over here. It actually bypasses all the way along this harbor side, sidewalk area. There's really not a lot of curb cuts over there. You could lay up the bypass eighteen inch of upground HDPE, go the whole way and then tap it over here. That way we could take the, the pipe that we need offline. And then we actually had a couple of slip liner contractors. We evaluated with them how many times we needed pins to go across to do the slip lining.
Right.
The average is about a thousand feet. They can do up to twelve hundred. Some of these bends like over there, they might have to do a little bit shorter. But, you know, what you can do is you can fuse, the one thing about that island is we can fuse there and then just bring it on in and take, you know, just take one lane out as we need.
My question, my question was, where does Swanska's line parallel to us?
I'm not an expert on their line. I know they come in up here.
Do they come in on neutral five? I believe it's on the.
They're on the.
In the southbound lanes.
Yeah, they're on the southbound lanes. And then Zach, we pulled their plans at this break over here. They were still on the southbound. So they're on the other side of the.
My question, my question is, have we talked to Swanska? Have you looked into perhaps putting a, a bypass into, connecting the huts to Swanska at that location? Because it's good to use their pipeline as a bypass to eliminate the cost of bypassing. And not only that, but what would, it would also benefit each community in the event that something happened. You could just transfer the, the flows over to the other side. You could just transfer the, the flows over to the other side.
We haven't looked into the hydraulics of that and that would be more into the detailed design, um.
How much of the, how much of the cost is bypassing? Ten, twenty percent?
Um, we can.
About fifteen percent of the cost, I believe we estimated a balance, eighty-five million dollars.
Of the, of the.
What size is uh Swanscott's?
I think it's twenty-two, twenty-four?
So, our, our eighteen inch pipe doesn't, if we do a bypass, doesn't serve them really as a, a um redundant line because we wouldn't really be able to take on the additional capacity, it would be kind of a one-way.
Well, I mean, I, I depend, I don't know, I don't know what the, the pressures are, what the pressures are along those lines. I know that the huts, it's what, about forty pounds?
Yeah, it's a lot.
It's low pressure, right?
I would say Swanscott's, Swanscott's the same way.
Especially when it gets to that point.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, it's probably pretty low.
I don't know what the condition of impact is, um, and then you can get, it gets, um, it's definitely a hydraulic exercise you have to do because if two pump stations are pumping into a single line, even if it's only for a short period of time, they're gonna go high, they're gonna go riding off that curve which means both stations are gonna have lower capacity, so it's like, you know.
Just a thought.
It's an exercise that we.
Wow, I mean, yeah, okay. Couple of other questions, so uh, you using any sort of high-density PVC?
For, uh, for the slip lining? Yeah, for the slip lining, uh, that option, the one that we would recommend is actually it's um.
Schedule eighty or something like that?
Uh, this one, um, I think they go by the, the, yeah, it's HDPE and they're using, um, I believe it's a DR seventeen class. Um, and the, the option that we're talking about there is, you know, traditionally if you have an eighteen inch pipe and you slip line, you need to do like a, uh, maybe go down to a fourteen inch or smaller. The, the um contractor that we're looking at is actually, he comes in at the exact same size, eighteen.
That's what I was gonna ask, so it's, so the, the pump curves are the same, it's not gonna change that?
Exactly, you're exactly right, yep.
All right, um, the other question I had is, Tony, this is a borrowing, is this a forty-year note that you're looking at?
Well.
Or a twenty, or have we looked at that?
We're, that's what we're looking at, we could do a, we could do a uh, up to ten years on a short term, which the, the rates are really good, but we're also gonna look at SRF, the sewer rela- uh relief, which I think is a thirty-year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we actually, uh, Dan Coughlin put in a, an application to SRF already last year, mostly for the II issues on the internal uh system. And I have a call in the DEP to talk about potentially amending that application a little so that it can be used for these more critical needs. We have a pretty good bond rating, so the rates are pretty similar, but if we could get a thirty-year through SRF.
That would be good.
That would be great.
One, one last question, on Willow Road project, you said it's AC pipe asbestos.
Yeah.
Mine, um, how do you deal with that? Do you just um, leave it in place, when you abandon it?
They, they keep changing the regulations a little bit, so we're gonna have to find out, but, I mean, we could abandon it in place, just do a couple of spot test pits and then flow fill and just abandon it right in place. Um, you know, obviously, I, I don't think they're gonna want us to dig it out.
No, chip it, baby.
It'd be just, it's a waste of time and a waste of money. And then it's gonna go to a s- special uh disposal place, so. I would just say that we break it a couple of locations, put flow fill, button it up, leave it there.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Yeah, uh, I freely confess, I'm not an engineer, but it strikes me that if a community like Lynn, we're only getting thirty-seven years out of uh, out of sewer pipelines the way you're like we've experienced, or even fifty, as you say with the PVC, we'd see a hell of a lot more uh streets torn up and construction going on. And so I'm not in a position to, to compare the actual experience, but uh, are, are we in a position that we erode lines more rapidly than other uh, other communities? Is there something that we need to do in addition to replacing this? Because even a fifty-year replacement cycle seems like a lot of digging and expense to me.
Yeah, I think, I think pipeline as far as like whoever the pipe manufacturer is, um, I think they never want to really say it's gonna go above fifty years. So, I mean, if we put in an HDPE or PVC, likelihood is probably you'll get more life out of it than that. It's just manufacturers won't really want to do that.
Yeah, it's, I guess it's, it's hard to say whether we are experiencing more or less than other communities. I guess you, you could probably speak to that, it's, it's based on the conditions and of, well, the material of the pipe, how old it is, the conditions of the, of the um, you know, its surroundings. We have uh tidal flow, we have gas and electric, electric, a lot of electric utilities, all in that area. I mean, most of these breaks, these big, big dollar breaks were in the same general area, right on the Linway about where the U-Haul station is, so.
Tributable to the stray electricity.
Yes, yes.
One, one of the things that ductile iron pipe make is, ductile iron is made up of many different metals. Um, and they sort of mix it together. And if it's not manufactured properly, you get some soft metals, um, and the electrolysis will attack those soft metals first. Um, and that's why you see those holes like that. So if, if the pipe is, eh, if you're not, if, if you don't have the quality control on, on the manufacturing, sometimes you can just get some bad lengths of ductile iron pipe.
Well, okay, that deals with the, with the, with the rearview mirror, the, the, the iron pipe that we've been using. Going forward, the, the PVC will be installed inside of the existing pipe. The existing pipe will in effect be abandoned, just be an extra shell, an external shell, right?
Mm-hmm, just a host, yeah.
Right.
Just like a sleeve, that's all it is, yep.
So there's no need for people in town to like change their diet or anything?
No, we uh, we do, we do ask the community, be careful with uh, what, what you uh flush down the toilet, you know. A lot of uh flushable wipes nowadays uh cause a lot of clogging and do put a lot of stress on the system, but uh, you know, there's, with, with proper maintenance, we can get a decent amount of life out of this, out of this pipe and avoid, you know, the, the one point six million dollar break that we had in twenty seventeen was a three-foot section of pipe.
Well, actually, that raises a question. I'm assuming that the stray currents are not gonna bother the PVC at all, correct?
Correct, correct.
I mean, it would not be in order then to, to beef up the specs uh of the pipe that runs in the, in that part of the Linway where the stray currents are, are in existence. No, nothing to be gained by that, correct?
Right, if, if back in nineteen eighty-three when they built that line, they had PVC and HDPE available, I'm sure they would have built it out of, and we wouldn't be here now, so.
Um, question, uh, to towns, uh, all towns have a sewage office. Is the protocol of towns budgeted for, they're making it so now that it's possible to make this or mentioned in the janitors. Towns typically uh have a kind of current budgeting in there that's properly made to make sure that, uh, that's what I'm saying, it's two, something like that, like a long timer, three, five, twenty-five, thirty, or or is this common just to, uh, something like that?
Yeah, yeah, no.
It would seem like if because of visualizing these things, um, is there ways to budget every year, start every five years and then like significantly or maybe smooth out a little bit?
If you wanna, I.
Question, the question uh was about budgeting and plan, proper planning for these types of breaks and um, you know, what type of tools can the town use to prepare itself financially for, for breaks? Uh, we have a sewer, you know, our, our water sewer rates are an enterprise fund. We do have retained earnings there that uh carry over from year to year. We had about six hundred thousand dollars in that in twenty seventeen that we had to deplete completely uh when we had that one point six million dollar break, uh, two breaks, that totaled about one point six million. So uh, there is, we do have a tool in town that we can build up some stabilization within the water sewer enterprise fund, but it's, it's, you're never gonna be prepared for a six million dollar, you know, massive repair. Uh, when it, when it comes to that point, you're think, you're looking at either a short-term, long-term borrowing, um, grants if you can get a hold of them, or using, like we talked about the sewer rate relief fund, um, or a debt exclusion, you know, you could do a vote for a debt exclusion, uh, basically an override that would pay for that job. So we do a good job of, we do factor that into our sewer rates to build up some, some uh, some retained earnings for capital planned repairs and um, certain emergencies.
Because especially going forward, I don't think you understand, there's so much breaking that lives out. And that would be, also, I would, I would acknowledge that we, for what we consider is, this is ongoing to the new layer side. I would say the town, women are involved in very much, and this, this budget every year is put in the fund and everyone, everyone in the industry, you don't have to do so with this, one is all I have, that's all.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, if you're gonna talk, you're gonna get, go to the mic, please.
I don't know anything about this matter, but.
I see him behind the, hiding.
What? Oh, um, I don't know anything about this matter, but I'm just wondering if there's anything one can do in terms of preventive maintenance, so a scope perhaps to go down and see where pipes are wearing thin and can get replaced before they actually burst? I, I was just wondering if that technology exists.
To do a full scale commission?
Well, I mean, assuming there were a good system in place, moving forward, um, instead of just waiting for the big bang, maybe there could be ice gas, but I don't know anything about it, some type of scoping or something where you can actually look in to the pipes and see where it's wearing, where that electrical current is, for example, and maybe replace sections instead of waiting for things to kind of blow, just questioning that.
It's possible, you could do, we, we consider doing a um, a, a full on, a full assessment of the entire pipe, which basically would send a scope throughout the entire pipe. Um, so it is possible, but it's costly because to do that, you have to bring in those pump trucks, kind of shut the force main down, uh, so it's, it, it ends up becoming a cost-effective decision that you're trying to make. Um, we were able to get a pretty good read on, on this, on this pipe by going into the manholes and, and doing a thickness assessment. And hopefully with this repair, we're, will prevent uh future major breaks, you know, if we get ahead of this.
Uh, for force mains like this, where the pipe is always full, the pipe's always full, um, it's, it's very expensive to do one of those evaluations, especially for a piece this long. Um, just the equipment, the instrumentation to do this and for half somebody to actually put the instrumentation through is probably about two hundred and fifty thousand minimum. That doesn't even include that they want the pipe nice and clean. Um, they want you to, what's called pigging, clean out all the sediment first, which is probably like another two hundred and fifty thousand. And then their instrumentation that they want to, they, they need to control it at a certain speed. So that means you have to bypass the whole line, which gets to, Mark, your point, doing a bypass around, that's like another half a million. So it's like, okay, we've got a, for this one, this is when we talked all together, we're like, can we, do we really want to spend a million dollars on a pipe that we already know is, is, is breaking? Um, we know why it's breaking and it really, we already know that um, a thirty-five-year-old ductile, uh, ductile iron pipe is about reaching its, end of its useful life, so we said, let's just hit the manholes and it, eh, we, we saw what we had predicted, so um, we just went, you know, we just need to go straight to design. Um, so that's it for force mains, for the gravity sewers that Coughlin's doing, they can send a CCTV camera in and that, that's easily done, that's easily done. These force mains are pretty difficult, um.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Andrew.
Very much appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks for coming in, making the presentation, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mark, I'll abstain, I motion to uh, close this year's warrant, twenty twenty.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to close the annual town meeting warrant as of tomorrow, January thirty-first, two thousand twenty, as sta- as stated in section three of article two of the general bylaws.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Second, further discussion?
Uh, one question, what, is there a time, like at five o'clock or is?
No, the, the, it just says on or before the thirty-first day of January. So anything that's received by midnight tomorrow uh will be considered. You know, if it's a citizen petition, the signatures have to be approved by the town clerk. Um, but if it's a committee, as long as it's received before twelve, I think we can accept it. And then, and, and um, Board of Selectmen have the ability to open and close a warrant beyond this date as well. So if there's things that we want to add into the warrant, which there will be, uh, we'll, we can do that.
Further discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request from the Nahant Public Library to host a puppet show, February nineteenth, twenty twenty, from ten thirty AM to eleven thirty AM at the Nahant Town Hall.
Is there a second?
Say second.
Motion's been seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request from the Nahant Public Library to host an animal show on April twenty-second, two thousand twenty, from ten thirty AM to eleven thirty AM at the Nahant Town Hall.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Second, further discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. These are appointments now?
Mm-hmm.
I move um, that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Austin Antrim to the Community Preservation Committee for a term of one year and thereafter a term of three years.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna abstain from this one.
Oh, that's right, too.
I'll second the motion.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I move that the Nahant Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Nancy Cantelmo to the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee for a term of one year.
Seconded.
Motion's been seconded, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the attached lobster trap storage leases as presented and further that the lease of the, oh, excuse me, that the release of said leases are subject to payment of all outstanding fees, fines, and payments to the town of Nahant.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion's been seconded, discussion?
I just want to say that Zach, that the compost area looks great down there, doing a really good job. You know, the, the lobster men have really stepped up in maintaining their areas really well too, so it looks good.
I uh, I, I wanted to say something too, I was down the dump and I tell you, you've got it really planned out and that's excellent. And uh, the lobster men are used, you know, banning, I remember years ago, they just uh used to, all the old traps, we had a problem, we had to bring out eighteen wheeler. they just, uh, used to, all the old traps, we had a problem, we had to bring out an 18-wheeler. Yeah, no, it's in good shape, and, uh, you should be congratulated because the, the dump looks good. Thank you. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Selectmen open the tree hearing, as noticed in the Lynn Daly item, on January 15th, 2020, and January 22nd, 2020, for section three of chapter 87 of Massachusetts General Laws.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Further discussion? Um, all those in favor?
Well, uh...
I'm gonna open the hearing in a minute.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor? Uh, any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I will now open the, uh, hearing. The tree that's, uh, requested to come down on 22, in front of 22, 40 Steps Lane. Uh, part of the hearing, I'm gonna ask you, are those in favor, first, speak on, in favor of taking the tree down, and then those against taking the tree down? Okay? Who's in favor of taking the tree down? Come on up. Make sure you give your name and address of where you live, so we know who you are.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Mr. Select, uh, Board of Selectmen. My name is Tom O'Shea, and I, I'm currently residing at 2240 Steps Lane in Nahant. Uh, my family has, uh, lived at that property since 1968. Uh, I am, uh, uh, the sole resident there. Um, my parents recently passed away, uh, and on the night of October 16th, uh, we had a major storm in town, and that tree dropped, uh, several limbs and damaged my fence, um, mailbox, and, and cut the power. Uh, it's not the first time this has happened. The tree's probably 150 years old. Uh, just, uh, to let the town know and everyone know that, uh, you know, I, I hug trees with the best of them. Uh, I hate to see a tree come down, but this tree is, uh, it's had several incidents over the years. Uh, on, uh, about 10 years ago, on July 3rd, it dropped a limb that took the power out on the street. Uh, it, it dropped it in the, in a, no storm, no nothing, just out of the blue, a tree, uh, girth of the limb was, was the size of a tree. Uh, no warning, no nothing. Uh, the, uh, the remainder of the tree, about 80% of it, is hanging over the property at 2240 Steps Lane. Uh, it's a, uh, it's a threat to the, uh, house. I'm afraid that it's gonna destroy my home, and, uh, I'm looking for relief from the town to, uh, to cut it down. Um, I think that's about it. Any questions?
Well, so you're in favor of taking it down?
I, yes, I, I put the request in. I, uh, I am the, uh, the reason this, uh, hearing is here today. You know, I, I put the request in. Uh, let's see. I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, those against, uh, taking the tree down?
Julie Tarmey, 3440 Steps Lane. I'm in the middle. Um, I have experienced the same things that Tom has as far as just the branch coming down all on its own, no wind, no storm, but also the October storm, the branch came down and it blocked the road, so I couldn't leave through 40 Steps Lane. And then when I tried to go down Walton Lane, there was another tree from another property that went across the road and was hanging on the wires. I love trees. I am a member of the free tree people. Um, I also have small pines in my yard that are about four inches tall that I'm nurturing, and they've seeded themselves, and I want them to grow. But just about all of the branches on the street side have come down, either in no sort of storm, or with a, uh, northeast wind, or just a, a heavy snow, they've come down and they have taken the power out. Most of the branches that are left are now on 2240 Steps Lane. They hang over 2240 Steps Lane. I don't know the health of the tree, but when branches just start falling off on their own, the tree really needs to be looked at to see if it's healthy, and if it's not healthy, it definitely needs to come down because there are small children who live on the street as well. So again, I'm in favor of trees, but this particular tree really needs to be looked at.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have a question.
Name, please.
Debbie Vander slice, 368 Nahant Road. I was wondering why people are coming to you? Is this a town-owned tree as opposed to someone's personal property?
Yes. It's on, it's on, it's a, well, the, actually, it may have Mark Carboni, the tree warden, speak to it, but I believe it's a public shade tree, and it's on public prop, it's owned by the town, it's on public...
Okay, I assumed, I was just wondering for sure.
It is a town tree. Yes, go ahead, please.
Uh, I've, I've been called to this tree several times over the years, and, um, it, it is a very large tree. Um, there aren't many large trees left in town. Um, and, um, it is our tree. It's, it's Nahant's tree, so, you know, there's, there aren't many. And, um, it is healthy as far as it's growing still. It has a, a very strong trunk. Some of the branches came down in a storm. Storms, as you know, trees fall down all the time. If you have a, I, I mean, I had trees in that October storm next to my house that had branches fall down and, and things like that. And they do need to be cleaned up and things, um. With this tree here, it is very big, so if a big limb comes down, it can cause some more damage than, say, a smaller tree. Um, it has been pruned up in recent years, uh, to raise the canopy, and we did prune, uh, a lot of dead wood out of it at one point, too, I believe. Um, after that storm, I did recommend that we prune any broken limbs that are currently broken, any diseased limbs, anything that's dead in the tree, um, to make it safer. Um, barring a, you know, a, a act of God event, I would like to call it, uh, you know, a, a, a big storm, um, you know, you can never tell with, if we cut down all the trees in Nahant, we would be safe, you know? I, I mean, that's, that's essentially where my, where I look at it, um, you know, uh, that's, um, that's how, my feeling, I think the tree should be kept, made safe as possible, and, um, that's it.
Good. Anyone else?
Question?
Yeah, question?
I just wanna question the tree warden. Um, Mark, I know you've been the tree warden for how many years now?
Sixteen, I believe.
Sixteen years, and you're an arbust, and, um...
Massachusetts certified arbust.
You're a certified arbust.
For over 30 years.
For over 30 years. I know your background is in landscape architecture also, right? Um, so your feeling is that the tree is, uh, worthy enough to get, what, what's the diameter of the tree?
Uh, it's gotta be over 70 inches, uh, so it's, it's a...
What type of tree is it?
It would be considered by the state of Massachusetts, a heritage tree.
And what type of tree?
It's an oak tree, red oak, yeah.
Must be circumference, not, not diameter.
Yeah. How long does it take for a, a tree to grow to that circumference?
That takes a long time to grow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, and it's in a, it's in a good spot because it has a lot of, um, grassy area around it, so it, it, it's healthy. Whereas if you have a tree that's planted in a sidewalk or something, it doesn't have as much room to grow, so...
How did we determine that it's in the public right of way?
Uh, I looked at basically the street where the property lines, I see fences, you know, um, resident fences, and just, you can tell it's within the buffer zone of the, uh, street and the property lines.
So where, where a sidewalk might have gone in the original layout?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Um, discussion with the board. Gentlemen, which, what's your pleasure?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a tough one, right? I mean, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's hard to disappoint a resident, but, um, I think from my perspective, uh, we have to, uh, consider the benefit to the community as representatives of the full community. Um, it, it is a tree that belongs to the community, um, and I, I understand that, you know, branches do come down in storms, and sometimes branches come down not in storms. Uh, I looked at my own yard, and I have five trees that if they fell, would take out the power. Um, so I'd like to keep the tree, uh, personally. Uh, I hate to disappoint the resident, but that, that would be, uh, my point of view.
Um, I, I support the recommendation of the tree warden.
Um, I too recommend, I go along with your recommendation, especially your tree. And I went down there, looked at the tree, and it's, it's kind of a, um, to me, it's a young tree, I, it's not something, you know, it's got a good base to it. Um, maybe if you, uh, if you go down and see if we could trim it up somehow, maybe trim it back a little bit, but I don't know what else you could do, but, uh, I looked at the tree, and I, I think it's, uh, fine. I, I would hate to take that tree down, to be perfectly honest with you. Um, Mark, I mean, Tony, did you have any recommendation on that?
I think that we could have our, um, our tree service contractor take a look at it for any, uh, dead limbs or, you know, dangerous limbs that could potentially be removed. We typically do that in the springtime anyways, we have them come in and do a, a trip around town, so, uh, that's, we could, we could have that, have that...
Why don't we, why don't we take this under advisement and have you look at, have your, uh, your tree warden, tree, uh, people look at it, take, get back to us in a couple weeks? Does that, does that agree with the board? Okay, so we'll move, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, put this tree hearing over for a couple weeks, and just give you a chance to have someone look at it. Zach?
I, I think we've, Mr. Chairman, I think we've looked at the tree...
Oh, you have.
Pretty closely. It looks, you know, the tree warden is taking a close look, and it's a healthy-looking tree. There may be some limbs that could be removed, and in the springtime, we'll have our, like I said, we can have our tree service contractor take a look at that specific tree for any loose limbs that may need to be removed, but I wouldn't, I, I think we could probably settle the question of whether to remove the tree completely or not tonight.
Okay.
And I would say, I don't think, my opinion of it is with the tree warden that we should not.
Yeah. I think I, I think I agree with that, uh, Mr. Chairman. Again, we have a, a tree warden who's a certified, um, arbust in Massachusetts for over 30 years. I think he, he knows what he's looking at, and if it's his opinion that we should keep the tree, I think we should keep it. And I agree that, you know, if we can trim it up and make it a little safer, fine.
Okay. Josh, I, I'll entertain the motion.
I move that we, um, support the, um, the tree warden and keep the tree.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries your name. Okay? Thank you very much for coming out. I appreciate that. Okay. Um... Ongoing business, uh, it's the town administrator's report. Tony?
Okay, we just get my... Okay, uh, first, I wanted to report that, uh, we have decided on a color for this year's parking sticker. We actually, uh, we actually submitted five colors to the Johnson School Elementary, uh, students, and they held a contest. The colors were lilac, gravel, uh, berrylicious, palm tree green, and lemonade, and lemonade took, uh, the victory with 73 votes. So the official color of 2020 stickers is lemonade. Thank you. I, I, the schools, the students at the school had a blast with that contest, and, uh, appreciate them helping us make a decision.
That's fine. That's okay with me. That's good.
Uh, I also wanted to, I, I let, I let the board know a little bit ago, we got an update from mosquito control, uh, who will be coming into town in the next month or so. They're waiting for the, uh, for the, get a little bit colder, for the ground to get a good frost on it, to do some, uh, ditch maintenance. The, the way that, uh, mosquito control works is from our state aid, we deposit funds into, uh, the mosquito control program. It's percentage-based, so of Essex County, we actually put the least amount into, into that program. However, they try to split their budget evenly across all communities, so it's a good, it's a good, um, cost for the town. And Zach and I met with them last summer, 'cause they didn't come out the previous year. They had some transition in their staff and weren't able to get any work done, so we're the first on their list this year. But we had them come out, we walked the entire ditch system, and really talked about putting them on a, on a, on a, like a five-year plan. Typically, the way that the budget works is they can probably do about 500 feet of clearing in, in town. Um, the, the DPW can, uh, provide assistance under their permit, and we can maybe extend that amount of work, uh, within reason. And what we've decided to target this year is the ditch system in the golf course that actually goes along the eighth hole. So from, basically from White Way, where it cuts into the golf course, along the eighth, uh, eighth fairway, eighth hole fairway, and then underneath the sixth fairway and into Bear Pond. That area hasn't been, um, maintained in quite some time, and you can see that it's, uh, probably suffers the worst amount of, um, it doesn't, it doesn't drain well, and the, and the area over there in White Way has a tough time, uh, filtering over to Bear Pond. In future years, or year two, year three, we talked about within the Heritage Trail off of Flash Road, behind the compost site, that's actually part of why we are putting such an effort into removing material from the compost site now. And then of, of course, along, um, the, uh, what's that, the sixth, the sixth hole left side that heads towards Mitchell's Corner, uh, as well. So, good news is, it should be happening pretty soon. The weather's not really cooperating, the idea is to, for it to be a little bit colder makes it a little bit easier of, of, of work to be done, um, but we got some news the other day, it should be happening in the next, uh, month or so.
Question?
Um, go ahead. Um, is the, uh, what do they do with the dredge material? Do they just leave it on the side of the ditch, or do they remove it?
We have to remove it, so we'll have to dewater it.
And what do we do with that?
We'll have to dewater it, we'll probably put it down the compost site.
And where do you dewater it?
At the compost.
At the compost, yeah. Well, there could be some smell to it for a while.
Yeah. Um, I think in the past, well, you, you would know, I, I think we did, uh, some dewatering in the parking lot at the, on the golf course, and it was, it was quite the...
We, we dredged the ponds, yeah, that was a, quite a volume of material we took out, but, um, and, um, the other one, we talked, I know that I had met you a while ago down at the Nahant Thicket, and, um, we looked at the ditch there, is, is that being scheduled to be, um, repaired or dredged? Have you talked to Audubon about that, or have they approached you on that?
We have not, um, the, well, mo, the last I have is really with the work that they were planning to do in the thicket, and that they may be including some, you know, vegetation removal with the boardwalk repairs or, um, construction that they were planning to do. We believe that Audubon owns that ditch system in there, uh, it does tie into the town's downfall pipe, uh, so we'd like to, you know, given we only get 500... we only get 500 feet about a year, uh, we want to target some of the, the other main systems first.
But Audubon could contract with mosquito, Essex County mosquito control to do that?
They may, they may be able to.
Josh, you have any questions?
Uh, no. Do we accept, uh, do we have a sense of how much we can augment with, uh, with the town's labor?
Yeah, I, I don't know that.
Like matching foot for foot or anything like that?
That's, the problem down at the golf course, um, especially with all the ditches, they're all overgrown and it has to be cleaned out. And, um, doing a, you know, just a, from the eighth tee box to, um, back will help. But I think it's that, the main drain, uh, the, uh, water flow from the pump station down in, uh, Castle, you know, back in the, the dump, all that's all plugged up. And, um, I know you've got people with licenses for a great all. That's what you need, one of those, you know, the great all that goes out there. That's what the, the Essex mosquito control use. And, huh? Yeah. I mean, I, I just, I mean, uh, and, um, but, um, uh, those ditches are all plugged and they're overgrown and just, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they rent the, they rent the great all.
I had a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Let me, I, okay. I'd like to see those, uh, all those ditches cleaned out because it, um, it won't flood the golf course as much, number one. The water will, someplace to go. And, um, especially, you know, along, you know, you, along six, seven, eight, um, five or four. And then the main pond behind Kelly Greens, you're gonna have to get a, uh, that, that has to be lowered. That's another problem. It's all the, uh, the drainage for the whole town and all these, um, you know, the, the material going in there is just, it just filled up. So you need one of those, uh, you know, giant crane. They used, they had that done, I believe it was five, six, seven years ago. I, I remember.
Yeah, well, it was a while.
Maybe longer, yeah.
You did it, didn't you?
Yeah. So I mean, I just, if you can take a look, I don't know what the costs involve in that. I mean, we, um, but I, I, I think, you know, maybe that's, it will help out tremendously, you know, on the, on the drainage system down there. Sure. Yeah. Yep. No, I know. I, I think you're gonna need, you know, to sub that out and, um, you know, I don't know what Essex mosquito control is all for you, but we should call someone and ask for help, you know, like, um, our, our political, you know?
Well, I guess my question is, Tony, perhaps you could explain, um, to the board and people at home in terms of using Essex County mosquito control and, um, the permitting requirements, particularly with, um, Conservation Commission and that, that type of stuff.
When you get into a full dredge project, really bringing the depth of the ditches, uh, down or cleaning or pulling material out of the bear pond, you get into Army Corps and CONCOM and, and DEP NOIs. You get into some really intense permitting, which add cost and certainly the material, as we talked about, has to be removed and tested for contaminants and then you always run into potential concerns about that. Um, a simpler, uh, approach, cheaper approach, but takes, you know, because of, given our, um, the size of our crew and, and every other, you know, the other needs of the town, is vegetation management. Uh, we don't need an Army Corps permit and we may not even need a DEP permit to do, um, you know, basically like four inches of vegetation removal. That's just making sure that the ditches keep, continue to flow. So that's, now mosquito control, um, tend to get through permitting process a little bit quicker and easier than, than a municipality would because they, they're doing this work all over the state. Uh, so that's where we're trying, we're hoping to, to gain a little extra, actual work by doing some vegetation management, uh, for now.
Um, is mosquito, Essex County mosquito control exempt from filing?
I don't think, I don't believe they are. They just, they just have a little bit easier, uh, process to go through because they're familiar, you know, they work with, they work with, um, the Army Corps and, uh, DEP on a consistent basis. It's pretty relatively similar every time they're doing the job. So they, they, uh, they kind of breeze through the, the permitting process a little bit faster. But I don't, Zach, I don't even think they're getting, I don't, they're, I don't even believe they're gonna be getting, um, Army Corps permits for this, uh, because of the scope of the work and they're checking with DEP if they need any permits with them. And our town CONCOM is, um, in the loop, you know, our CONCOM and our, uh, Kristen Kent is in the loop on the, on the, on the work and continue to keep her involved in the process as we get closer.
Okay. Um, I know you threw the right thing, Jack, down there. I've got a lot of, you know, the complaints coming in.
Um, you're gonna have to be selling the golf balls? The golf balls they catch.
Oh, no.
Can we sell the golf balls we pull out of the ditches? You can probably get a bucket of these for them, right?
Yeah, we, we, there's quite a few golf balls in that water.
I know I've deposited quite a few in there.
And they're pretty good. They're Pro V's too, you know, the, so they're, you took them already off the, the back of them. I mean, I, I, it's amazing, uh, what was it, along, uh, the fourth hole? Is it the fourth, the third hole? The third hole? Fourth hole, right on the side here where the, the ocean drains and it, you can see all these golf balls. And I, I don't know who was in there. They went in with hip boots. They brought out, I mean, like, three buckets full of golf balls. I mean, the big drum, and they were brand, some of them brand new. I mean, guys were, they're playing with expensive golf balls down there, so that tells you something, you know?
Uh, on that, we're, we're also in the process of getting quotes from contractors to, uh, clear the gravity pipe from Bear Pond. We have about $30,000 of, uh, damage funds from FEMA for that work. Uh, that, that pipe's been clogged for a little while now, uh, so whenever we need to pump that, that pump down, we gotta use the, uh, the manual pumps, so, uh, Zach's been meeting with contractors this week and, uh, we're hoping to get that cleared as, you know, as soon as possible.
That will help.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, 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 I knew that was plugged up, but I, I know you were pumping it over the walls and everything, but that will help tremendously. Yeah. Right. Yeah, she flows right through. Yeah. Okay.
Um, a couple of other quick things. Uh, there is, there was work this past week and we're continuing on the top, the cell to, cellphone tower behind the police station. Wanted to let folks know, there's, uh, they actually are removing the top 30 feet of the tower and will be replacing it and they're doing some maintenance work, maintenance work there. Um, they should be, should be done next week and then on February 10th, they'll be doing, uh, some more, uh, upgrade work to the, to the tower.
So, one thing on that, I think there is a, there are some conditions on that tower in terms of the type of antenna, so I'm not sure what they're replacing it with, but I believe in their permitting. Um, there was an issue about, you know, whether the antennas wrap around the tower or stick out. Um, and I think it's in the permitting that they have to be a certain, certain, yeah, something like that. Just to check into it.
Yeah. Uh, my understanding is there, it's the, the antenna wire, the antennas that are mounted to the side of the tower are being replaced, but they're not changing in size. Uh, the diameter of the tower itself, that top 30 feet, may expand a little bit, but, um, it's not getting any taller. Um, and then the last thing I have on here is, uh, Airbnbs. So the la, we talked about this at the last Board of Selectmen meeting. Um, we've had some complaints from folks in town about Airbnbs and, um, you know, not, uh, not having regulations and, and things of that nature. So town council's taking a look, I've taken a look. Uh, we're not prepared to have a vote tonight. Uh, probably actually is gonna require a town meeting vote anyways, uh, but it would be something that'll present the board an, an article if you so wish to pursue it. Um, and that, that conversation is around, uh, regulations. Um, there's a local hotels tax that we can, we talked about this at the last meeting, that is, um, assessed and...
A community impact fee is also a possibility.
Right, a community impact fee. Um, there's a number of options for us to consider. Uh, many of the, many of these options are fairly new. Um, the, the opportunity for, uh, local government to regulate, uh, was expanded in July of 2019. And I'll, I'll let Dan, uh, speak to some of the findings that he came up with.
Yeah, there are really two arms to this. There's a financial arm, as Tony said, an excise tax and impact fee. And outside of that, we actually have the ability to regulate, uh, where these things go, how many there are. And maybe more importantly, we can light, we would require them to get licenses to make sure they're up to code and all the codes you can imagine. Um, and that might be the most important part of it, cause I know, Richie, you worry about the harmony of the neighborhood and that may be where the most impactful, uh, source would be. Other towns have done this, so we have a good roadmap to find out what is working and what is not working. The financial aspect of it starts with the excise fee and then it grows to the impact fee, but you can avoid all that and go right to the regulations to, uh, be more aware of what is in our town. Because as of now, it is required, they are required to register with the state, but not locally unless we, we push the issue. And, uh, that is what, uh, the new laws are allowing us to do now.
Well, I think, yeah, because, um, the complaints I heard, and it was from several areas, um, the BnBs, you know, they, um, they're only supposed to have two people, only the same two bodies in there. And there's, um, not only they're going, putting multiple, multiple people. And, um, the other thing is they just, uh, the parking, it's always the closed areas where we have the, you know, the parking restrictions over in Little Nhat and, um, Bass Point, you know, it seems to be, you know, congestion and they're just multiple. The other thing is the, we should look at too, is people are leaving for the summer and they're renting their houses out for the three months, four months, and they're moving families in there. And usually it's, um, uh, in the illegal apartments too. We gotta look at that too, Tony, because there's, there's just a lot of it that's going on and it's just, uh, it's got, you know, they're not paying taxes, you know what I'm saying? And some of these people, uh, there's two or three families living in one home and they're only paying, you know, it's like the, it's like, um, the rubbish is a perfect example. Um, one family's paying one trash bill and it's, there's two or three families living within that structure. And you, you can tell, you can tell, you know, Zach will tell you when driving around the town that there's not, there's, there's, there's not that, there shouldn't be that many people putting out that amount of trash, you know what I mean? So I, I appreciate you looking into that. And then the, the other ones, the families moving in for the, another three or four months, they go away on vacation, they rent their house out and, uh, we should look at that too. That's, that's another problem.
There's a number of categories, uh, for short-term rentals.
Right.
And, you know, it's, um, different levels of, uh, registration with the state. If you have multiple homes and you're renting out multiple homes, one person renting out multiple homes, you kind of fall under a different category versus say if you were to rent your house out for a week through Airbnb or, and then there's bed and breakfast. Bed and breakfast is a different, is a whole nother category that we have, the Board of Selectmen, um, has, through the Board of Health, acting as the Board of Health, uh, put in regulations in the town for bed and breakfast, but that, like you said, is only, um, that category only includes two people renting a room within a house that offers a meal. Uh, so it's, you know, there's, there's many different categories. It's, it's, um, there's a decent amount of things that the town can do. Um, and what we'll do is we'll put, we'll continue to put something together and potentially have something on the warrant this, for this town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, one, one requirement that, that we discussed is, um, and then you alluded to Richie, is, uh, a requirement for off-street parking for any of these places. That's a, that's a topic that comes up every, every couple of months, we're talking about parking and we certainly don't wanna make it worse.
Well, it, it, it seems, you know, it's, uh, some of these people, they've got two, they're supposed to only have two persons in and they've got seven or eight, and they get seven or eight cars and they jam in the parking, you know, and of course it's always in very difficult areas for parking and they just, they park at will and, and...
And there's, even beyond that, there's things like, um, you know, when you go, when you rent, when you go to a hotel.
Right.
Right on the back of your door tells you how to get out of the hotel in a case of emergency, cause you're not familiar with that building. You know, those are the types of things that, that regulations allow, allow you to do that when you register as a short-term rental, you may be required to provide that type of information to someone who's using your...
Well, it involves all, all about departments, right? Police, um, health, need to go in and inspect these buildings and make sure they have the alarms and systems and, uh, before there's a tragedy, you know what I mean? Some of them don't have smoke alarms and they've got multiple family people living there and, uh, we have had a major fire, you know, and find out after the fact that there's, uh, two or three families living in there and it wasn't supposed to be only one, you know, things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's good. Very good. Thank you for following up.
You got it.
Okay. Any else, Tony?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Before I close, is there anything else, uh, anybody else would like to, Billy, oh, sorry?
Are you all finished?
We're just about, yes. We're gonna be, we're gonna be going into an executive session here in a minute. I'm gonna read the, read the motion to get into executive session, but if you wanted to say something, go ahead.
Yeah, Viapatic 172 Willow Road. I just want to thank the town for this electric sign, um, when you're coming just past Little Nhat that flashes telling you how fast you're going. And I wonder if you could explain how it works? I understand it's connected to the police department so they can actually see what's happening. Can you explain how that sign works?
Well, it's, it's on a, it's on a, generated by the sun, but, um, I won't tell you there's cameras there watching you coming in. I won't tell you that, you know? But, uh, it's just, it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a sign that...
It's solar.
It's a sign to slow people down and, uh, go 25 miles an hour. Once the police chief made a determination that 25 mile an hour throughout the whole town, it just, um, people coming off that causeway, uh, have a tendency to come over that hill and, uh, you know, as you all know, there's a playground right there and there's kids coming from the beach to the playground and it's very, uh...
Yeah, it's working. I just wondered how it works. Is it connected to the police department?
No, it's not connected to the police.
It's not?
It's connected to a sun.
It's just a freestanding thing?
Yeah, it's solar power energy and it does, it does actually, um, record data though.
It records.
It does record data, but you have to download the data from the, from the sign itself.
Okay, so the police can get, get a sense of, um, general speed across a, a month or a year?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Anyway, thank you for doing that because I, I've seen a difference. I don't know if you have, but we're going more slowly, yeah.
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on. Billy, you, you were next.
I'm sorry, Billy.
I didn't want to leave you off, Billy, when you...
Thanks, Rich. Bill Mahoney, 179 Willow Road. Uh, last June, uh, Northeastern, uh, came to our natural resource area up at East Point and, um, under the guise of doing some, uh, testing, they, uh, tore up over 30,000 square feet of, uh, turf up there, which is a natural resource area, nat, a lot of wildlife, a lot of nesting birds. which is a natural resource area, a lot of wildlife, a lot of nesting birds, last June. And they destroyed a whole lot of pines, black pines up there. The Hard Preservation Trust and over 30 Nahanters have gone to court over this issue with them destroying that property up there east of the bunkers. And as of yesterday, now they're backed at it with some more tree cutting. Right on the boundary line, near a lodge park, on that steep hill, they destroyed two 30-year-old pine trees yesterday afternoon. And by the way, under the guise that they needed to get into the area where they're going to do geothermal drilling next week, but there was no need to take those trees down. They're right on the boundary line, close to the lodge park, Zach, where you, you know, where the roadway is. And first of all, erosion is going to take place with taking all that, those trees down. And I really think the town should look into this. I know they came to the Conservation Commission and said they were going to do some testing. The Conservation Commission said, well, we have certain regulated areas in the wetlands, and they said, well, we're going to do most of our work upwind. Okay. As far as, when I look at the zoning bylaws, it looks like the Planning Board has a say on this. And the Planning Board, they did not go to, come to the Planning Board with their plans, other than a quick little mapping, but it had nothing to do with their testing. Therefore, more and more trees again destroyed. Again, it's a bird sanctuary, as far as I'm concerned, up there, and many Nahanters love that area. And I think the, I think the Selectmen or the Planning Board should be involved with Northeastern right away, so more damage doesn't occur.
We passed a motion here tonight.
I was two minutes late, but at the same time, as far as I know, they're going to be doing some dumping, drilling within the next few days, and I think it's pertinent that people address this now rather than after the fact.
We passed a motion tonight that they have to notify us, and the motion, I think...
Five days.
Five days in advance of anything done.
So, what's the deal in the next five days? What are they going to do?
Well, that's going to be hand-delivered to the, by the Town Administrator and our enforcement officer, because we don't want them to do anything, and they're going to tell us exactly what they're going to do, planning coming, you know.
So, if they show up tomorrow, what happens?
Well, if it's in violation, we'll put a cease and desist order on the whole operation. Not everybody speaks, just, you know, one at a time.
Yeah.
Okay?
Well, I'm very concerned that they may be coming in this tomorrow, on next Monday or Tuesday, Wednesday.
Right.
And, you know, they should be, they should be sitting down with you folks, or the Planning Board, explaining what the site plan review with you or the appropriate board. So, I'd like to see that happen.
Well, let me first say, I was up there this morning myself with a group of people taking a look at the devastation that has occurred, and it's sickening up there. It turns my stomach when I see that happening up there. I've asked Town Administrator to set up meetings with Town Council and outside council, so that we get a handle on which jurisdiction, Planning Board, Billy Inspector has jurisdiction over this. One of the questions is, can, I heard, can the Billy Inspector stop the clearing of that? You know, the initial findings are maybe not. That may be addressed in the stormwater bylaw. We're looking into that. There may be an issue in terms of drilling, whether that is under the authority of the Billy Inspector, whereas you're having a, perhaps a structure put in the ground. So, again, these are some legal questions. I just want to make sure we are on sound legal footings before we take action, but we do plan on taking action.
Okay, thank you. I was looking at their plans also. They say they're going to be, the drilling's going to need water, and then the impression I got was they're going to be pumping water into Nahant Bay, and I think there's some issues there as well with the spawning flounder, and as well as lobster population, if they're going to be putting dredge spoils, whatever you want to call it, drilling spoils into our bay, that's something to look at, too. Thank you.
Peter O'Gall, 391 Nahant Road. As everybody knows, in town, we had a wetlands bylaw vote a month ago, whatever, and to me, and I think a lot of people in town, it was a referendum on the percentage of people that are against Northeastern expansion, and I believe it was 87% of the people voted for the amendment to the bylaw. If we take that number, and I'm being quite literal and logical here, and our Selectmen and our attorney, attorneys and Town Administrator, I would hope, and I think you have now, embracing what the voice of the people is. So, the voice of the people is to fight that vigorously. And I think we're waiting for an opportunity, we're waiting for the opportunity to hear from our Selectmen publicly, including our Town Administrator and our attorneys, and a unified voice, which we've never had, a unified voice from the town and the residents that were against the expansion in a very aggressive public way. And what's happening here is, and Mark spoke to it, is that it's been a very fractious thing for us, as you know. We have some residents fighting it, we have some residents not fighting it, we have, we've never had the town fighting it. So, this to me, and I think 80 or 90% of the population, is we're very anxious for you folks to have a unified voice with us and say, you know what, we hear you, and we want you to do something about it. So, when we talk about 30-year-old trees being cut down, it's not good enough for them to continue to do that. So, whatever bureaucracy, and I'm being respectful, you have to go through, understand that 90% or 87% of the residents are waiting for you guys to take action, okay? Because I think we're showing you guys that we're really taking action. I mean, we should not be the only ones in this fight every single day, spending all of the money, and all the signs, and all the publicity, and all the marching, and all the buses, and everything else. We want you folks to do that with us. Thanks.
Peter, I can say that I'm sitting here tonight because I'm, I think I'm part of that 87%. And I think we are moving to be united in our effort into making sure the right thing is done.
Shell, 29 Ocean Street. On December 18th, at the Conservation Commission, there was a hearing with Northeastern to talk about the work that they were proposing. Conservation made an agreement with Northeastern for a five-day notice. My understanding is, Northeastern provided that notice on January 17th, and that allows them to do the work that they started this week, bringing in the equipment, doing the clearing, clear-cutting that they needed to do for that area. My understanding also in that notice was that on Monday, February 3rd, they're going to do their drilling as part of their testing to fulfill their environmental impact report. Now, what I think some of us are struggling with is the lack of communication and instruction by the Town Administrator and the Board of Selectmen to all the department heads and the committee heads, to make sure if they are interacting with Northeastern, that they are also communicating with all of you. Now, our boards work very hard for us, but I think there needs to be that clear path of instruction going forward, that if they're getting any communications, any notices, that all of you are getting it as well, so you can start analyzing it to understand what else is happening in terms of the impacts. So, when the residents are coming here and saying, hey, we're really concerned about this, but you only have part of the information, because when one board got it and didn't communicate it to either you or the Town Administrator, there is a broken link right that's happening.
Alice Court, Seven Valley Road. So, there are a couple of issues that need, I think, oversight by the town that have to do with what Northeastern claims they're entitled to do, and the state has indicated that they're allowed to do. My understanding is that for this entire project, with regards to the testing, they are only allowed to clear 1.0 acres of land. And that means for all of the property that they've already cleared from the very beginning of their analysis. So, this would, I think, impact the Canoe Beach project, because that is also part of this project, as considered, as indicated by Secretary Theo Haradis of the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Agency. Allegedly, they have already cleared about 0.5 acres, and this current part is supposed to be another clearing of 0.47 acres or something. But what I'm hoping is that our town people will, some professionals will be measuring this, and that we're not just taking their word for it, for what's been cleared. Because from my eye, it looks like an enormous amount of land has already been cleared. When you, if we, if someone, I'm not qualified, looks at some of the drone pictures from how it looked three years ago, before they really started this project, and compare what the drone pictures look like now, and then measure the hillsides that have been cleared, because the hillsides on a drone picture will look small, but an actual hillside will have a lot of more property on it. Do we know that they are being honest with us? Are they really stating the correct acreage? In addition, I went to the court on, I guess it was Tuesday, and this also goes along with Secretary Theo Haradis's report, response to the DEIR that they filed. They're really only supposed to be clearing the very minimum to do the minimum work that there are, they claim that they need to advance to the final EIR. So, many of us are wondering, why are they having to take down trees right by the walkway that is the property owned by Nahant, up this hillside? That's where they're taking down these pines, and they have more pines, Mark, to take down. When, you know, my understanding from the Concom meeting was that the drilling is going to be in front of the bunker, because, you know, that that's the part that they were arguing for was okay. So, they're supposed to be doing soil samples, but it's not at all clear to me why they're clearing up that hillside when that's not where their geothermal wells are going to be. So, is there somebody representing our town, protecting our town, analyzing this information and making sure that they are really sticking with the bare minimum, which is all the judge gave them permission to do and all Secretary Theo Haradis gave them to do? Thank you.
Julie Tarmy, 3440 Step Lane. I'd like to add to that question. Before they do any clearing, are they not also supposed to be doing an archaeological study? I don't believe they've done that yet for any Native American artifacts or leftover artifacts from our most recent history of 200 years. So, I don't know if they've done, I don't think they've completed that yet, but they shouldn't be clearing anything until they've done that study.
Alice Court, Seven Valley Road. That was a...
All right, Alice, well, we had some other...
I'm addressing that.
No, no, I understand, but someone else wanted to speak. Where's the hand back there? I saw her hand go up. Oh, okay.
I'm addressing Julie's question. It was addressed in court.
Okay, go ahead.
The judge, that point was raised, and then the Northeastern lawyer claimed that what they were going to be doing was so minimal that it could wait until, so that the historical commission analysis for Native American findings were not going to be significantly impacted. But once again, there, my feeling was that that lawyer was really minimizing the extent of what they're doing, and that there's nobody that's completing that circle and checking that what they're saying is true.
Yeah, Alice, I know that there's been some conversations today with the Mass Historical Commission, and I haven't, I haven't heard what the result of that was, but clearly there is a disconnect between, I'm talking about communication, but communication between state agencies, with the secretary making a ruling, and, you know, some of it based on the archaeological issues, and Mass Historical not even being there. So, I think that that needs to be straightened out. And I did talk to the Town Administrator about, you know, looking at that one acre. I know just by eye, and I sort of measured it by foot, the first time they clear-cut a lot of that property, it was about a half an acre. What they've done now, I know, Zach, if you had a chance to get up there and do a rough measurement, but you're right, we'll need a professional engineer at some point to certify that, because I am sure that Northeastern has their professional engineers saying that it's under an acre. So, we need to make sure we have someone look at that.
Mark Paddock, 172 Willow Road. I was also at this hearing, and they said to the judge, 2,000 square feet, that's a tenth of an acre. That was the total amount of disruption in order to do their tests. And it was 2,000 square feet.
Yeah, so, just to add, Mark, you know, we need to get up there tomorrow and measure. I know we will ultimately, if we think it's close, need professional engineers' measurement, but we'll get up there tomorrow to measure and see if we're at least close to that one acre. And to your points, Michelle, we do need to do a better job of coordinating and communicating between all our committees and the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator. And to your point, Peter, I am opposed to expansion by Northeastern.
Peter O'Gall, 391 Nahant Road, and thank you, guys. So, the next question would be, we have some evidence that they have maybe dug out more than an acre. We have, we don't know that, but we do know what the court said. We have witnesses, and a judge made a decision on another 2,000 square feet. It looks like I went up there, it's definitely more than 2,000 square feet. So, why not go up there or send them something tonight that says you can't do anything, because our Selectmen and Town Administrator and lawyers said, we believe that you're in violation already, before they cut another blade of grass or cut a tree? So, I think that's what we're saying here is, like, you know, we, and I don't mean to be flip, but it's going to sound flip, we're not saying that town stickers and things like that aren't important, but to 90% of the population, them not doing any more work there's the most important thing. So, we do need sewers, we need stickers, and we need Girl Scout cookies and everything else. But that is the number one thing we need to do, and I think that's what we're trying to impress upon, is that they're going to, Northeastern has proven to us that they lie, and they amplify false, you know, false statements. We know that they're going to try to run over us, like other towns have been doing that, but, you know, they're going to keep digging and killing birds and animals until you guys say no more. I mean...
Well, we've already advised the Building Inspector. There's to be no permits issued to Northeastern. You are to advise the Board of Selectmen immediately. So, there's no permits from the Building Inspector being issued. Northeastern has to come through the board for those permits, and we've advised them of doing that already.
Just to, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind me interrupting.
Just to, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind me interrupting, just for the record there, the building inspector has been advised not to make any action until notifying us if he receives any sort of application. Clearly, it lies within the building inspector to make those actions. The board can't really do that or, or direct him to act a certain way before receiving an application. But I just, we have informed him to hold and notify us immediately.
Well, that's fine. I, whatever, yeah, that's fine. I, you know, the, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, this is control. We just, you know, the board, the board is totally against the expansion of Northeastern, all three members of this board. And we'll, you know, we, I, I go up there a lot. I drive and I see, I see what they, the clearing they did. And, you know, when I drive in there, they come, all of a sudden, they come running out because my car is going through there, and they try to explain themselves. And I keep telling them, "Stop whatever you're doing because you're going to end up in court. We're not going to allow them to expand that area." Very simple. We're going to fight whatever we have to do. Your request, Peter. The board is totally against Northeastern's expansion. There's no question in mind. All three members of the board, plus the town administrator, and as well as the town council, so, because he lives in town, too, so we just, you know, it's, it's not meant to be, and we just, we just don't want the expansion going on at all up there. So...
Before Donna, can I just respond to something that Peter said and Alice, too? Because I'm hearing two things. One is that Northeastern may be violating a provision of something that the court said they shouldn't be doing. So the question is, what authority does the town have to sort of step in and stop them because they're doing something that the court told them not to do? I mean, I'm looking at our authority based on our zoning bylaws and based on our other bylaws like the stormwater bylaw. I mean, I think we're constrained to those types of violations in terms of issuing any order to cease and desist. Whether they are doing something differently than what they told the court they were going to be doing, I'm not quite sure how we fit into that in terms of, and I don't know, the town council answered that better, but...
If the court issued, at Essex Superior, I believe it was, up in Newbury Park, if they issued an order and they're violating that order, we would go right back to that court where they call an emergency motion for an injunction, a preliminary injunction. But we would need hard evidence that, that previous order is being violated. It's a high standard.
Okay, thanks.
I just wanted to ask, on the very first motion, oh, Donna Steinberg, 33 Winter. On the first motion that Mark made about Northeastern notifying the town hall, Tony or whomever, about any work that they have, I think we used the word extensive. I just wanted to look at that one word so that we could be absolutely clear that they don't take that beyond what we really mean. So it could be any work that they're going to be doing, it could be some other definition, some other words, so that it's absolutely clear to them because they've already taken advantage and we've seen that happen. So I just wanted to clarify that one word, if you don't mind. Thanks.
Michelle Capano, 29 Ocean Street. One thing that just came to mind in terms of the chairman's comments. So I appreciate the board's going to be completely and 100% unified, including the town administrator. That means you're rejecting the $6 million term sheet that was presented several months ago to the town?
I think, I think it means what it, what it said, that we are against it.
It does, and so I appreciate that we'll be able to open a dialogue with Northeastern or you'll try to open that dialogue with Northeastern so we can understand, you know, how we can have this collaborative relationship. Because I think these are things that need to be clarified and that term sheet's an open item. And I think for residents in the town to have, instill confidence with the board and the leadership, we'd like to know when that decision point happens. Not tonight, obviously, I'm not expecting that.
We're going to, I had you when you cranked it. We're going to have a meeting with Northeastern very shortly, the board and the town council and the town administrator. That's being set up as we speak.
So my, my suggestion would be, beyond just all of you, you should also consider having it with the Planning Board and Conservation. They need to be at the table to understand a lot more of what their planning and their intent is going to be, so they are in the process at the very beginning. And while they work, while we know you are the leadership board, obviously, but I think you really need to bring some of them into the fold as well.
Okay, anything else? I'm going to move in a few minutes here. We're going to adjourn the, adjourn the meeting, the regular part of this meeting, and we're going to be going into an executive session pursuant to General Law's 3821 to discuss the lease and evaluation of real property at Kelly Green's Golf Club in One Willa Road. While I'm in open session and after the chair declares an executive session, it's necessary to protect the Board of Selectmen. Negotiation position, this motion should be made to enter into an executive session. I'll make the motion. I move to go into executive session to consider the lease and valuation of real property, Kelly Green's Golf Club, One Willa Road in Nahant, Mass, and not to reconvene back in open session. A motion, I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thanks, Mark.